Doors have no electricity, half of the outlets in my garage don't have electricity. I've checked this, I've checked everything.
And this happened after you put the Christmas lights on?
This happened yesterday.
Oh.
Yeah, no, the Christmas lights went up on Saturday. I don't know what happened yesterday. It's not the circuit breaker, it didn't trip a breaker, so I don't know what's wrong.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you get a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aye and aye.
Vows aye.
Uh, how about the minutes?
I did read through the minutes, uh, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
There's two sets.
Two sets, yeah. Alright, I'll call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aye and aye.
Vows aye.
Wait on the wellness deal, uh, Haley, I see now you got a claims here.
Oh yeah, you just need to sign that one.
Okay.
That's for, um, which I'll talk about with the opioid committee.
Okay, then I'll wait.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, let's start the wellness.
Do you stand right here or chair where you want me? There's a place in here, okay, so, my name's Lori, I'm here with the Wellness Committee. We have Felicia, Monica, Cecilia, Grace, and Beth Gator, and Bruce is also on the committee. So, we have some exciting news, we had eighty-nine people participate in this year. Um, so we earned a total of four percent discount, which is great, um, we could have earned five, we were super close, but maybe next year. Um, so we're all really happy with all the participation, um, let's see. So, since we had such great participation, we wanted to see if we could get approval to do the same thing next year. So, basically, we need approval for a wellness day, if they do their physical, and then they're also getting twenty dollars off a month from their insurance costs. So we would like to try and do that again this next year.
We're also doing something a little different this year, instead of giving everybody like ten or twenty dollars, we are doing a drawing, they could win five hundred dollars today. We're gonna draw seven names, so we're gonna see if that helps people participate. Any questions so far?
Do you want to mention where the money comes from?
Yes, this is money given to us by ISAC, um, they call them wellness dollars, and we have a balance of three thousand six hundred dollars. And this men- money is given to us specifically to incentivize employees to participate. Um, we can't make anybody participate, we can't punish people for not participating, we can only, um, reward them for participation, so. That's what we are going to do today.
Yes, the best part, it doesn't come out of our budget.
Right.
So this money is just for getting a physical and some other.
Yep, um, last year we also got the four percent, so if our insurance premiums were two million dollars, five pers- or four percent of that would have been about eighty thousand dollars that we saved, the county.
And the hundred dollars comes from Voya themselves.
Yep, they also get paid a hundred dollars if they do their physical, and that comes from our.
And that will be mailed directly to the employees, just so they know it doesn't come through a payroll or anything.
And the twenty-five dollars, does that come through payroll or go direct for that assessment daily?
That's through payroll.
Yeah, that goes through payroll, that's what I thought.
But the hundred dollar check is mailed to you and it'll come from Voya?
Yeah, so there's lots of perks if they participate.
And we've also included those that are not on insurance, too, if they do, give approval of a physical by December first, they can also get just the wellness day. Just as incentive to keep everyone healthy in the county, if they are getting on insurance and they're already kind of in that cycle of getting that yearly and having that part done. So, reminder to those watching, get that done.
That's pretty smooth. It's all positive, every, every part of this program is a positive.
So are you guys thinking that you would be okay with doing those same incentives next year, or?
I am, I'm all for it.
I am all for it.
Yeah, we just need a motion, because I think that's how it was done last year. We want a resolution, not a motion.
We need a motion.
Yeah, what they want.
Okay, well, I, I'm fine with that, I would make a motion to, uh, approve the wellness day and insurance discount for employees participating in the health insurance, uh, physical for two thousand twenty-six, that matched what we did in two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aye and aye.
Vows aye.
Perfect, thank you, we really appreciate it. I think the wellness day really helped get people to start participating, um, so we have eighty-nine names in here, we're gonna draw seven, those seven will each get five hundred dollars, ran through payroll, because it is taxed, so. Do you guys wanna draw?
Me, how about we go around the room, we each start drawing? Anything about drawing your own, right? Felicia Stash.
She actually, she talked to me about this, she wants to donate it, so, it's okay, I'm sure so.
Dorothy Wild.
Dan McKenna.
Jerry Bascom.
Richard Stallman. I'll make this day.
Damien Fairbanks.
So, that's six, seven, seven?
Six, seven.
William Grimm.
Awesome, great.
Well, congratulations, everybody that won, um. Sure, I'll do that.
What payroll is that going on?
Is this case announced?
So I'll turn that.
I'll turn that claim form in today, the molly.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's the perfect thing, I think we do it at the December annual.
Sounds good, alright, any more questions?
But, if I just might add, that I think the Wellness Committee has done a fantastic job, they've gotten together, I would like to see a representative from every single department at these meetings, we need to get the word out to everyone that this is something.
I did get people to contribute, so hopefully.
And, uh, we just had a meeting, and there wasn't a whole lot of participation from the, from the, uh, but, there were some, but, this is really important, we can save tens of thousands of dollars a year, just as simple as getting a physical done, so. Just kind of a shout out to all of the other managers to mention it. Thanks for all you guys do, thank you very much.
One of them's not up here?
No, she's gone, but I can talk about those quick if you want.
Hello?
Abatements.
I have seen it, but it's nine, ten, we gotta kind of, the city school.
Yep, second tier.
So this one's a little bit different, um, because the other counties are certifying, there are schools' election information to us, so we're gonna go, just go down the line. I highlighted in yellow what you're looking at, if you guys want to see how they certified it, I didn't give you their originals, because every county does things a little bit differently, um, but they are available if you wanna take a look at it. So we're just gonna talk about, because we already looked at Benton Counties last week, so we're just gonna look at the other counties. Uh, so City of Welford Mayor, uh, thirteen sixty-nine one zero zero, that was at the polls, absentee two five zero zero zero. Council fifty-three twenty sixty-six four twenty-three zero, absentee seven one five one zero zero. Bell Plains School, for Tama County, thirty-three thirty-seven zero twenty zero, absentee six seven zero five zero. Powashik, one one zero zero zero, absentee one four zero three zero. Iowa County, eleven fourteen zero five zero, absentee all zeros. Forty-two zero three zero, five one three zero, Powashik, one zero zero zero, absentee four zero zero zero. Iowa County, fifteen zero zero zero, absentees all zeros. Tama County, twenty-one twenty-four zero zero, two seven zero zero. Powashik, one zero zero zero, absentee two two zero zero. Iowa County, eight seven zero zero, all zeros for absentee. Benton District Four, it was only Benton County, but I have to include it in, since it's all Benton Community School District. District Five, Iowa County, nine zero two zero, absentee one zero zero zero. District Six for Iowa County, uh, everything zeros, for absentee in the polls. Benton-Schelsberg, for Buchanan and Blackcock, all zeros, same for District One. You can, I would say consist, but you started in the general to do by resolution, so I would stay consistent. So, I would need a motion to approve the second-tier canvas as read, and then you get to sign your votes away again.
And that'll be via a resolution, but we'll type it up like I did for my study. Yeah, it'll be ninety-two, I'll just have to fix the abatement one, too, I was just sorry that you went first on that.
So this guy is the, in the official book that we have, this is for the February one, so it's, it's just there, and then, this is.
I would make the motion for resolution twenty-five ninety-two for the second-tier canvas for the city school elections.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aye and aye.
Vows aye.
So since we got out of order, then I'll, goes ahead with the resolution, twenty-five ninety-three can stay the same, but the other abatement will be twenty-five ninety-four. Maybe you have those workers back? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
That's not true aside.
What's that?
True or quite true, no?
No, no, just a feeling.
Either way, we can wait.
Hold on, yeah, we can do that if you want to, works for me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dennis and Rachel Hearn are seeking approval to change the use of approximately one acre of land to allow for an additional single-family dwelling. This property is located three miles north and three miles east of it in on, uh, at fifty-five, sorry, fifty-five thirty Twenty-Seventh Avenue Drive, and that's within Section Thirty of Harrison Township. In this proposal, it concerns a twelve-point-six-nine acre that is owned, uh, parcel that is owned by the applicants. The majority of the area of this request has a cornsabilerating, um, of fifty-five, which is not considered high-quality farmland. There is a single-family dwelling and church to the north, with a single-family dwelling and row crops to the south, and there are agricultural row crops to the west, and hayfield and timberland to the east. Access to the property will be via a new driveway, which was reviewed and approved by Dan McKenna. The property is accessed from Twenty-Seventh Avenue Drive, which is a gravel county road, with an average daily traffic count of two hundred and eighty vehicles. The dwelling will require a new septic system, which will be permitted by our department, the existing water well will be used, um, for this dwelling. Eight notification letters were sent out to adjacent property owners, and legal notices were published in the official newspapers. The Benton County Lane's office did not receive any public comments concerning this request. This request, it's located on a parcel that is not associated with a farm, it is adjacent to an existing dwelling, therefore, this request is not likely to interfere seriously with farm operations in the area. The surrounding area generally consists of agricultural uses, with some scattered rural residences, including the existing residents on this parcel. This request should not materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern in the area. And according to our comprehensive plan, it is policy to provide limited and low-density single-family dwellings within the general rural use area upon a fair and equitable valuation. And for the reasons reported, this request is found to be consistent with this policy and all other applicable policies of the plan.
Pete.
Yes, Rachel.
Do you guys have anything you wanna add?
What's the two buildings that are there already?
So the one is their existing dwelling, and then the other is just a shop on.
Yeah, it's a, a pole barn, or, um, that has electricity and a concrete floor, but that's about it.
Are you gonna tear the old house down there?
Nope.
Yeah, just like a mother-in-law suite type thing.
Okay, we're good.
I would make a motion to approve the land use change for the Hearn's.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aye and aye.
Vows aye.
No, Haley, uh, a big tax is on these two.
Okay, so let's do resolution twenty-five ninety-three first. And those two were the cemeteries that we found that should have been abated and split off, Derek helped with that. They're not a huge amount, one was sixteen dollars and one was a dollar, but this is code section four forty-five point six three, so I need you to approve that resolution to abate those taxes on those two parcels.
Well, I'm gonna motion to abate the taxes, resolution twenty-five ninety-three, for parcel six sixty twenty-two four three zero for sixteen dollars, and parcel nine zero zero dash zero five seven seven five for one dollar.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aye and aye.
Vows aye.
So then the other one, we're gonna change that number to twenty-five ninety-four, and that one is another DOT parcel that Melinda was made aware of, that needs to be abated in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight dollars.
I would make the motion to abate taxes on parcel five four zero 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 eight one zero, in the amount of a hundred.
Forty-eight dollars.
Hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Vows aye.
Actually, I can probably print that here, since I can hook up to you.
Oh yeah, we can sign them.
I'll, I'll get that one fixed, but you can sign those other ones. And then we have vacation carryover for Ben Turnus. He's asking to carry over sixty-eight hours, his anniversary date is Friday, November twenty-first.
Six dollars, how long does he want him to carry over?
Typically, you guys give a couple months, but I'm sure he'll use some over Christmas break with his children, I bet.
So two months from his anniversary day, January twenty-first?
I would suggest give him till March, March, into March.
March thirty-first.
March thirty-first.
Yeah, that's my opinion. I know he's been busy.
I'll make a motion to, uh, grant the request of Ben Turnus to carry over your many vacation hours till sixty-eight hours to March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll second that motion. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aye and aye.
Vows aye.
Do you wanna do number twelve while we have some committee members here?
Yeah.
So we've been, the opioid committee's been meeting pretty regularly, I'd say, the last couple months, we've met once a month, um, we do have, I did a spreadsheet, you know how much money we've received in, and we've started to approve some projects, I know we've come to you guys in the past with a few projects, but we do have a few more I need your formal approval on, out of, let's see here. We've received so far, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand one oh five thirty-two we've received, and this, this money comes in as those settlements get approved through the courts, and then they're divvied out in the county. I believe we're supposed to get up to four hundred and eighty thousand, so we're being conservative, obviously, we're committing as we go along, you know, one year at a time. We've already, you've seen those invoices come through for Foundation Two and ASAC. Um, we also did an approval for Virginia Gay, they sent two people recently, I think there's an article in the paper, to some CPI training, and then those individuals can come back and spread that training on to others in need. So we approved that, um, we bought some prescription safe containers, wanna explain that one, Shelley, you might know how those work?
Yeah, so what they are is, um, they're a prescription box, and it has a four-digit lock code around the top, so if somebody is homeless, or if they have any sort of opioid medications that they're supposed to be taking, and they are in fear that they might get stolen, or they're not in the same place, um, they have the opportunity now to put their prescription into this lock box. They can create their own code, or we can create a code for them, and what we did is, I think we bought two hundred, and they're going to every single pharmacy and doctor's office within the county, so that way if somebody's picking up their prescription, um, this lock box is essentially free of charge to them to keep their, their medication safe.
And then tell the sheriff's office, you box it?
Nope, we divvied them out to all of the emergency center doctors offices.
Yes, they just recently did that. And then the other additional project we recently funded was for the jail to offset, well, we were gonna originally offset some of the medications, but Josh has confirmed that we're gonna get reimbursed for some of that already through another entity, so, um, they were approved for up to seventy-five thousand, is that right?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, sorry, I knew that was an addition, we reallocated that there, so, to do a full-time nurse at the jail, and I'll let them talk about it, because that's through another outside entity.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do here is, there's just a lot of bills that are coming in all of the time, um, if somebody's in their jail and they say they have a toothache, or they don't feel good, our policy is to take them to the emergency room, um, which is costly. Inmates insurance does not, it's not always applicable once they're in jail for a certain amount of time, so, we have a nurse that's there sixteen hours a week right now, um, it's just not consistent, so she, because she has a full-time job, so when she is there, she's helpful, um, when she's not there, we have to find somebody to take them to the emergency room, get them treated. Uh, so we want some help with that, we also need some help to manage the billing that comes through, because we do get reimbursed for a lot of the psychiatric medications that are, um, being prescribed in our jail through the new ASO. Uh, historically, it sounds like we maybe weren't getting those reimbursements on time, they weren't coming correctly, and so now, we've navigated that process, so that way, I think we just got a check for seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, starting this fiscal year, we've started to get the reimbursement from this ASO for the psychiatric medications, uh, committal transports, stuff like that, um, the first quarter, we've saved seven thousand dollars that we got back in reimbursement money. I would estimate about three thousand a month is what we would save, this is money that doesn't come out of our budget, well, we pay for it, but we get reimbursed for it, um, so the nurse, um, is gonna help us scour through these bills, and talk to the providers, make sure we're getting billed correctly, make sure we're submitting. sure we're getting billed correctly, make sure we're submitting what we need to, to the ASO to continue the reimbursements.
She'll check with every inmate upon their booking to make sure that they, to see if they have insurance, because a lot of times inmates have insurance up until their 30-day mark. And so we can bill their insurance essentially for some things, but right now, we don't have anybody that's back there that can do that. The correctional officers are busy, the jail administrator is busy. I've been trying my best to help back there, but I'm out on the road, I'm busy doing other things too. And so essentially what we're wanting is just one more body in the jail that doesn't, that's our correctional officer, he or she will focus strictly on the medical bills and then insurance checks and then really helping the inmates that are there that don't know that they need help. It's a big thing on my end because we're seeing a lot of inmates that have mental illness that don't recognize that they need any help. And those individuals, those inmates take a long time, a lot of time, to try and figure them out while they're in jail to get them to a situation where they can be successful once they are released. And one inmate takes days, sometimes weeks, to get the help that they need. And again, I've been doing my best to help facilitate some of that, but I don't have the time to be back in the jail as much as they need somebody. So we have all these voluntary services that are coming in. Those programs are working great. We're working very close with ASAC, with the Abby Center. And that's for the people that want the help. What we're seeing now, like I said, is people that don't recognize they need it. And it just takes a lot of time to try and figure those people out, so.
And also triaging our patients, like all the patients, inmates, you know, it could be 10 o'clock at night and they might have a stomach ache. So our jail staff will call the on-call doctor and he'll say, send them to the emergency department. So there's thousands, literally thousands of dollars for a stomach ache. So we need somebody back there to triage these people and say, no, you have a stomach ache. You don't need to go to the hospital to the emergency. And even if we're trying to set up, instead of sending people to the emergency, like setting up appointments at the clinic, you know, instead of just, I mean, none of these people would be going to the emergency department if they weren't in jail. So we're trying to get also clinic, you know, appointments instead of the emergency department. So there's a lot, there's a lot of parts to this.
And just like for an example, if somebody hits their call button and they say, I have a really bad migraine, can I go to the hospital to get an injection for migraine? We're not supposed to say no to that. I mean, there's, you know, we're instructed to call the on-call doctor and then it's really up to Dr. Skerr on what he says. And sometimes he will say, take them to the hospital. Or if we had an onsite person, she could prescribe some ibuprofen, some Tylenol, you know, because she, she'll be trained in medications and what to give and things like that. So same with toothaches. We have a lot of inmates that come in and they all of a sudden have toothaches and they want to be seen. So we set appointments up, take them to their toothache appointment, their dentist appointment, and then they don't want anything done. So it's just, it's a lot of big time. That's the medical side of it. The mental health side of it is, again, we have people that are just very unstable, which is one of the reasons why they probably committed their crime in the first place.
And just let me add to this.
Yeah.
Our, I know our numbers are up in the jail, but those are like federal inmates. Those aren't the people that are passing us money. They're actually making us money. The people that we're discussing are our own county inmates that are mentally ill, being held on charges, basically because they can't be on the outside because there's no place for them. So I don't want people to misunderstand that, yes, our numbers are going up in the jail, but those are fed inmates. We don't incur any costs for the fed inmates. These are, the people we're talking about are our own citizens, or not necessarily citizens, but people that are on our charges here in our county. So if that makes sense.
I'd like to talk about the financial side of this. We've got timed items, so we'll come back to this.
You go to their land use hearing.
We got one tonight, but we'll come back to it.
Jay Castle is seeking approval, changed use approximately two acres of land to allow for auto sales on his property associated with the dealer's license. This property is located along Highway 30, approximately midway between Atkins and New Hall, and that is within Section 29 of Fremont Township. The proposal concerns a 6.94 acre parcel that is owned by the applicant. The majority of the area of this request has a corn subильia of 48, which is not considered high-quality farmland. There are single-family dwellings southwest and a recently approved single-family dwelling along with row crops to the south. There are agricultural row crops to the north and to the east as well. Access to this property will be via the existing driveway, and that was previously reviewed and approved by the DOT as part of the applicant's original request a few years back. The property is accessed from the United States Highway 30, which is a federal highway with an annual average daily traffic count of 5,100 vehicles. The request will not require any additional septic system or drinking water supply. Nine notification letters were sent out to adjacent property owners and legal notices were published in the official newspapers. Our office did not receive any comments regarding this request. This request is located on a parcel that's not associated with a farm and is adjacent to an area with a moderate density of single-family dwellings. Further, there are existing commercial and light industrial uses on this parcel in addition to the residence. Therefore, this request is not likely to interfere seriously with farm operations in the area. The surrounding area generally consists of agricultural uses with some scattered rural residences and a residential subdivision further to the west. And as I had said, this area was previously approved to be used for dwelling, shop, and commercial storage in 2018. And so this request should not materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern in the area. According to our land preservation and use plan, it's policy to provide low-impact development opportunities within the general rural use area upon a fair and equitable valuation. As this request is within the area that has been previously approved for more intense non-agricultural uses, this request should not cause any additional compatibility issues. For the reasons reported, this request has been found to be consistent with this policy and all other applicable policies of the plan.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Okay.
This is just east of the existing building there?
Yes.
Is where?
There's a, there's already a concrete pad already.
Yeah, there's already cement there. I don't have a problem with that at all.
You're not? I'm not putting a car lot in.
Yeah.
So I want my, I have my concrete pad and what I run into is, I do stuff like I have a couple of my neighbors that I've sold vehicles for and the DOT watches. And after so many, you have to have a dealer's license. They, they start restricting you. Like right now, I'm sitting at my seven and my neighbor wants me to sell his motor home and it's like, I gotta wait till the first of the year. So, because I got my seventh one is up there, I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
So.
I understand.
So, no car lot, no, no big lights, no fancy flashing signs. It's, we, my wife and I just, we finally got everything all done and her daughter's graduated and we just moved to there permanent. We sold our house in Marion. As of last Wednesday, we are a permanent residence there. So it's, it's our house too.
Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion approved or?
I would make the motion to approve the land use hearing for Jay Castle.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tepit.
Aye.
Heenai.
Bull's eye.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll get back to that. I got two questions. All right, just the financial side of this. Why do we want this nurse and how much it'll really cost? So this nurse is not our employee. This nurse is contracted through a company called Advanced Correctional Healthcare, ACH. We pay $121,000 contract per year with ACH. And that's to cover liability. They provide a doctor, they provide a nurse. Right now, we're contracted 16 hours of nurse. We want to move to 40 hours for the reason these two just talked about. The new contract, we're having a Zoom meeting on Thursday morning to finalize it. Right now, they're at $191,000, so we're talking about a difference of $70,000 per year. That's why we asked the opioid committee for 65K to help offset that contract. And we understand that opioid money could evaporate next year, five years from now, we don't know. So what we want to do is rebudget the money next budget cycle. How can we offset that expense that we're going to incur in the future by doing a number of things? Our federal contract is at $50 a day for federal inmates and we're holding 10 inmates. We've moved to 20 inmates and new contract was submitted for $75 a day. They said this could take 120 days, so we're still waiting for that to get finalized, but I'm almost certain that's going to go through. What that'll do is that will generate $30,000 on average per month in revenue from just federal inmates. In addition, the nurse is going to help save money by the reimbursement claims that we're doing, the scouring of the bills, the running of the insurance to make sure LaGrange and other providers, Virginia Gay, are actually running insurance first. So there's a lot of hidden savings. Just the federal contract alone is going to cover that difference of moving her to full-time within two and a half months. So if the opioid money there is great, we're going to take it this year to get it moving. If it evaporates next year, we have a plan to cover that expense, so.
And this nurse won't be ran through our payroll, she'll still continue through the ACH company that we pay?
Insurance and everything as well.
We explored the idea of maybe hiring another Shelby to help with the jail. That's where we need the help. But the cost of having our own employee with benefits and everything else was greater than just moving the nurse to full-time, so.
We just have to decide if we're going to just pay that difference through the opioid fund right now or transfer money, but I think we could just pay it directly through the opioid like we have the other claims.
My question is, all right, you're going to have this gal here for 40 hours a week. You have a problem on Saturday or Sunday, are you still going to go back to the Virginia Gay and be bad on it?
That's what, we're going to treat, she's going to be there to triage. Right now, she can't be on call. She can't take any call unless she's at our facility. Moving her to 40 hours, her schedule's going to be a lot more flexible. She'll be able to come in, hey, this person's got a stomach ache, can you come in and check on them? You know, and we're going to save that trip to the emergency department and say, no, you have a stomach ache, you're not going to the hospital. So I mean, her hours.
So it won't be like for a month, eight, five?
No, 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 no. Not at all.
We've made that clear with the ACH. We want flexible hours. We need on-call hours. We need jail staff in the middle of the night to be able to call her, get advice. So it's not onsite 40 hours, Monday through Friday.
The question, it seems like some of the problems are repeat offenders because they know they're going to get out of there for a while. So do you think that this might, because they're no longer going to get a free trip and then out of the?
100%.
This will cut back on the misuse of that?
That's what, that's the word, triage. We're going to stop that from happening. We're just hemorrhaging money.
Yeah. This isn't going to work anymore.
And some of these bills we get, we need somebody, you know, if I personally go to the hospital, I know what they did to me, you know? I know what my bill is going to be. These people that we're just sending up there, we don't know what they're doing or if the bill is correct. I mean, we did a couple just random bill checks and they had overbilled us almost $1,000. I mean, almost $1,000. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but there just seems to be more checks and balances back there.
We're in the middle of developing a series of SOPs. Four of them are done. I got two more to do. They've already been submitted to county attorney's office to review, but we want to put this all in a package and bring to you by the end of the year. This restructures medical billing, how we run insurance, our jail fees, we're going to restructure how we're going to do work release. So all that will be presented to you before the end of the year. We're trying to do what we're allowed to do by law. And there's a lot of money that we're hemorrhaging that we can seek reimbursement on, so we'll have the full total plan to you by the end of the year.
And like the sheriff said, it's not the federal inmates that are doing any of this. If they go to the hospital, we just send them a bill. They take care of all of that. They're paid for. It's our people that are living in the county that we're speaking about.
Because the pendulum has swung back when this whole access center started eight years ago or whatever, the goal was to keep mentally ill people out of jail. But the pendulum has swung back the other way now where they're purposely keeping them in our facility. So we've become a mental health facility, so, and there's really nothing we can do. So.
But there's ways to seek reimbursement from these people. Unfortunately, we have to wait until they're convicted first, so we're holding them essentially for free. If they're convicted, we can go back and seek reimbursement, which is what we intend to do, something that we haven't been on the past.
But you can't seek reimbursement?
Until they're convicted. So let's say we make an arrest on somebody and they sit in our jail and they're waiting for trial. They're sitting in there for free. They're not even paying room and board because they're presumed innocent. So we have to wait until we have a conviction before we can go and seek the reimbursement money from them. The jail, unfortunately, is a money pit. We want to try and at least break even with them.
Well, if we can cut back on, every time we go through the bills, if we can cut back on the medical side of it.
Oh, we, we, we just, like I said, we're crazy. We're going through these bills and there's some huge discrepancies, you know, and it's been going on for years. Like we just got that, what, $7,000 reimbursement for three months? That was never done before.
And that's just psychiatric medication?
Just psychiatric meds that are in the jail. We tried to go back, but you know, the ASO switched July 1st, so we couldn't go back and get reimbursed for the last eight years. We tried.
My question is, though, I can understand if somebody's diabetic, they got to have the shots or midformin or whatever they're on. I get that, you know? But as for the medication for somebody that's, well, mentally that needs help to calm them down, you know, do you get that information from the doctor? You know, their doctor or, I mean, you don't take them at their word, you know, that?
The doctor prescribes it, our nurse places the prescription order.
Okay.
We incur that bill. Because it's a psychiatric med, starting July 1st, now we can submit that and get reimbursed and we actually are now. So psychiatric meds should be 100% covered. We should get, we have to eat the cost, but we can get the reimbursement.
And by law, you can't keep the meds from them. You can't.
It's up to the doctor what.
Yeah, so when someone's booked in, they're seen by medical and then they're seen by our telepsychiatrist if applicable. So if somebody comes in and tells our nurse, yes, I diagnosed anxiety or depression, you know, for years I've been on these meds, and we'll hook them up with the, we call it telehealth, they can see a psychiatrist.
So you just administer with the?
With the psychiatrist.
Clearly cold is not here, right?
No, we have her phone number, but I didn't.
Okay.
I have her phone number.
We'll continue.
Yeah, another tie-dye.
But I don't see her, so.
Yeah, she's not here, so we'll continue. I don't have no problem with you, Burke.
A big piece of this is it takes the liability off of the county and the jail staff.
And granted, there are times somebody does maybe need to go to the emergency department. We're not trying to keep people from going in. We're just trying to, you know, use some common sense here. If they weren't in the jail, would they go to the emergency department for a stomach ache? And the answer is no.
We'd like the nurse to be filtered before a call from the jailer to the doctor at 2:00 AM. Doctor's always going to say, just send them. So we want that filtered, please.
And they're over the phone. I mean, she's going to be there in person, you know, to, you know, just trying to diagnose anything over the phone, whether it's a car problem.
She lives local too, so she'll be able to come in, you know? I mean, granted, she's only one person, so there, there will be times that she can't. And then we'll go, you know, we'll reference our old system, but for the most part, she should be able to.
It really is. It really is a good deal. It's going to save the county a lot of money.
Okay. What happens, maybe I'm reading too much into the future, I think she's on, she gets four weeks vacation.
ACH?
Yeah.
They will send in a replacement.
There you go.
Yep, they covered that.
Okay.
We already checked into that.
You guys have done a dash across all the T's.
We've done all of them.
It's a very complex mess trying to understand this all, it's taken us five months, to be honest with you.
I appreciate the work you've done, that's awesome.
Now, I remember that contract. When is it up, the original one? You said it's one hundred and twenty-one thousand right now?
Right.
Is it that high?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then when is that up and when can, or can they just do an MOU and?
Basically, the whole contract's getting blown up and restructured, and that's what our Thursday meeting's all about.
Because there was things in there that.
Can't brok the findings.
That they were putting in there that we absolutely do not need or would never use, you know, kind of like when you buy a cable plan, you get all the crap channels to give you the channels. There's stuff that we don't need, you know, so we're meeting with them personally to get it buckled down and get rid of all the, because she doesn't need insurance, I mean, there's that, she doesn't need health insurance, there's just, you know.
So once you get this hammered out, then the contract will start from that point up, and then the other one would be just go.
No, boy, I would say.
Do they pay that monthly?
They do now, yep.
They do now?
Yep, so we'll have to figure out, like I said, either we'll give them revenue out of the opioid, but for that, then they would have to need that additional spending authority, so for now, we might just have to pay that additional through our opioid fund, which qualifies because of the requirements out of the opioid money.
I was just trying to get a word out, so much work for you, could you?
But we mean, we want to definitely track our opioid funds separately, so.
I know, but I'm just thinking if you make three payments out of the opioid to the new contract and then the county takes over.
Yeah, we'll make it work with the money.
The sheriff part takes over, you know, and send in two checks is what I'm trying to get away from.
Yeah, we'll work with them to make sure they're not over there spending, but we'll utilize the sixty-five thousand.
Yeah. Does that work?
Yeah, whatever it takes.
And in reference to the opioid settlement funds, a large portion of that exhibit is in reference to helping inmates in the jail, a huge portion of it. And like I said, our committee members, we've all seen the proposals before, we've approved them and go over stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I know in the past we did those formal approvals, so I would just ask that to formally approve the newer approval, so like we did the Virginia Gay Hospital.
Yeah.
I think that one, original one, was back in March, they also are doing, what was that, clinic for methadone or something?
Yeah, MAC clinic.
MAC clinic, so that was fifty-nine thousand five hundred Virginia Gay with the additional fifteen thousand three ninety-eight for that CPI training, and then the sixty-five thousand to the jail for the additional funds for the nurse. And then that safe prescription, we spent one thousand two hundred and fifteen.
And then I remember I came quite a few months ago for the transportation, to help inmates get to a accessible place once they're released from jail, so. We're not using a thousand dollars a month, I think we've used it three or four times since I've been here, but it does have that in case somebody wants to go to some sort of like treatment facility or the access center in Cedar Rapids, or even if we can connect them at the homeless shelter and give them a free ride that way, it helps.
So we're continuing to pay the ASAC monthly and then the foundation too as we go to this.
Well, there's also three of all these times running to the hospital.
Yes.
So they've been doing what they're supposed to be doing, they need to be doing.
So right now, out of that two hundred and seventy-eight thousand plus, we have committed two hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven sixty-three. So right now, after you guys approve this, we're going to hold off till we see more funds come in, so.
How much will be left?
Like I said, we're anticipating up to four hundred and eighty.
I understand that, I mean, we got two hundred and?
Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven sixty-three is committed out of the two seventy-eight, but partially, some of that is already for ASAC has already come back and asked for half of that for next year, thirty-five thousand, and we kind of approved that, but we can discuss that in next budget year time, so.
Okay.
Because I'm not going to start giving that out until after July anyway.
Yeah, we'd like to discuss that also, that ASAC money.
Yeah, that's me.
So can I get a motion to approve letting the sheriff's department have sixty-five thousand of the opioid fund to pay for a new contract for our nurse?
And then we're going to list out Safe RX prescription pills and then the Virginia Gay Hospital, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred for the clinic stuff, and then fifteen thousand three ninety-eight for the training, so I'm going to list those out in that motion.
Okay.
Out of the opioid funds, which is not county dollars, it's all funding we're getting from the opioid settlements.
Okay.
So move.
Yeah, I couldn't repeat that.
Got it.
I make the motion to do the nurse through the opioid funds.
Okay.
And the Virginia Gay and the Safe, if they've done, basically, we will count it for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand out of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
You did it, yep.
All right.
Second.
Okay.
Tippit, aye.
Team and I.
Rules and I.
We got her down.
Thank you, John.
You did a lot of hard work, thank you for doing all that. Makes it easy to understand.
Yeah, for Myron, we called the lady in.
It'll be written up for you guys by the end of the year.
I don't know, I forgot her.
I don't know.
We have her number, so if you ever call.
Thanks.
After Myron.
Good job.
Well, Myron.
Have a good day, guys.
Six minutes, I don't know yet.
You want me to try to call her? Or you want me?
Go ahead.
All right. I'll get her.
I've got all those, um.
I think it's done right now, please, this message, and I'll get back to you. All right, that answers that.
Hopefully, she's on her way.
Discussing office space involved playing youth services, but I don't know, that's news to me.
She was?
Can you print the other ones out?
No, I've got it right now.
Okay, you want me to badge it?
You should be able to.
I don't think we have to now.
You don't think so?
No, I think to make copies you do.
Okay.
We'll try it again, humbers.
She threw it what?
Hmm?
She was Luke's office somewhere?
That name sounds familiar.
You go to our board office?
Twenty-five ninety-one, are you going to do that one?
Nope, that's going to be the, that was last week's, the first tier of the election we have to sign.
So we did it last week.
Yep, and then you're going to have the second tier.
Branding out.
Yep.
Gotcha. like a half. Hey, break's just run out.
Say you can bet that's already done, it's only by the bar, concentrate.
It's going to be nice having that printer in here.
Yeah, that comes in really handy.
Suppose someone retweets something last minute. Good thing I didn't number your resolution. We got a little sidetracked.
I didn't give it to you, I told you.
I know.
No.
It's a big old paper.
It's going to be twenty-five ninety-five.
Did you print that? I have two copies here.
Yep, I can do it for you.
I got two here if you don't want to print.
No, I don't have to, I can do mine for my minutes later.
You sure did. I got you here.
Okay, Tracy left the other day and we had to go chase him down.
You missed one too?
Yeah.
When he come up to the office to sign.
I haven't seen the message, Tracy, there you go.
As bad as the homestead application day, is it?
Oh, I don't think it ever get worse than that, Kevin.
Oh, don't.
Remember, I saw the DOT trucks with the snowblades on, is that training that they're doing that for, do you think, or? I right saw the new hall, I saw they had two or three of them running around out there with snowplows on.
I'm going to guess so.
Yeah.
Because I didn't see anything but rain last night.
Yeah. Well, this is yesterday afternoon, I was cruising down the road and the buzzers, I thought, man, they got the plows on a little early, but I thought maybe they're just doing some training.
I think talking snow next weekend, I think I heard.
I heard over the.
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Yeah, usually is.
You just stopped there right now. Doesn't ever need to snow here.
You like to go snow a bit.
I like to go up north to go snow a bit. All right, ten o'clock, Myron.
Last week, when I was here, talked to you about Van Horn East Traffic, approaching town and leaving town, it's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit out there to basically our shed, garling machine, and went down there and looked at things about heading a forty-five mile an hour speed limit from that thirty-five east a thousand feet, so depending on how you look at it, coming into town, it would be from the half mile marker just west Ed Frye's into the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit signed by the shed and carrying garling machine. Likewise, from that point out to the half mile, forty-five for outgoing traffic. I have resolution number twenty-five ninety-five here for board approval if you're in agreement with that forty-five mile an hour speed limit.
I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five ninety-five, change the speed limit, signs the east of Van Horn.
I will second that.
Well, for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team and I.
Rules and I.
Well, you're signing that, second thing on the agenda, NACE conference, NACE standing for National Association of County Engineers, is having their annual conference next spring in Arlington, Texas, that rotates around the country. Went to it the last three years, last year it was in Schaumburg, Illinois, the year before was out in Palm Springs, California, and the year before that was Gulf Shores, Alabama. Prior to that was COVID years, so before COVID, I was attending them intermittently, but requesting permission to go to Arlington, Texas. Conference runs from April 12th through April 15th of 2026. Registration just opened two weeks ago and hotel accommodations can be reserved starting in the middle of December, I think.
I have no problem.
I would make motion for the engineer to attend the conference in Arlington, Texas.
I will second that one.
Team, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team and I.
Rules and I.
I don't think they've got a snow down, technically so.
You got an Uber down there?
I don't know, I haven't decided what the best. Probably not.
Probably not.
I'll be there next week.
But I know transportation would probably be wise to start looking at options here at this point, so that's why I came to ask for permission, so I appreciate it.
NACE is National Association of County Engineers next week.
Yes. That's all I have.
I'm hoping to go to NACO. I'll put that on the agenda for formal approval.
Is that a rotating, or is that national in voice, or?
NACO is the legislation conference, I think it's every, I don't think it's every November or February, but I'm the vice president of the audit association, so they kind of help pay for that.
I know there was a NACO meeting in Philadelphia.
Yeah, they have two a year, I think.
And I know a couple Iowa county engineers that attended that one, that's why I just wondered if it rotated different locations.
ASAC, Will Brown was there, they've really encouraged more to attend to.
Totally.
Don't have nothing. Have you, the gentleman that we moved on, we accepted last week as presidentation, have you replaced him yet?
No, yesterday was his last day on the job. I have applications being received through Friday. And I've gotten, I think, half a dozen applications already, so.
Okay, okay.
Six or seven, so.
Cool. And any applications are what I would call somewhat qualified?
Yes.
They're not green art?
Good, good.
Last Thursday, I attended the meeting with the utility on the.
Here's yours, Myron.
Thursday evening, over Hawkeye Downs, on the reopening of the join-on of the energy It was a choir meeting in the Iowa code that the, that was done during the meeting, was kind of interesting. The utility had to meet certain points within the code, and at the end of their presentation, the Iowa utility board folks were there also, and they said, they announced that the utility had met their points in their presentation and that they would be moving on with their, I guess, the certification for construction.
This was next era?
Yes. And then they opened it up to questions. The meeting had to be held in the area, county, city where the plant was to be located, so I do not believe they're required to have one in Batten County. We are within the emergency planning zone, but the entire plant is outside of Batten County, they do not need to acquire any more property, they own, I think they said like two hundred acres around the plant, so they have sufficient ground to do that. sufficient ground to do that, uh, and they're still looking at, uh, once the plant is up and running, about 400 jobs. Last, when they were open prior, uh, we had a good number of people working at the plant living in Baton County. That was my little meeting.
I, uh, wanted, I should have done this earlier, uh, at the last Heartland Insurance Risk Pool meeting, uh, it was mentioned that the, uh, inland marine coverage, you're not going to require that all firearms, shotguns, radios and whatever, the sheriff's department, whatever, be listed separately on that before it was a blanket. Uh, I should have given the mayor a few heads up.
She actually mail, emailed us all.
Yeah, but she did send, Judy did send out an email for that, so amongst everything else that they've got to do, they're not gonna have to go through the list, all of that as well.
Which I believe they'd already kind of started that.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, I wanted to give, uh, the sheriff a few heads up on that and it slipped through my mind, which is really hard to believe, something like that would happen. Uh, and then, uh, last week I met with the, uh, the health group, wellness committee, um, another shout out to those guys, they, they did a great job. And they're just really trying to help the employees of this county stay healthy. Um, and then Thursday I have E-Center, I have a workforce development. Uh, they have an open house at the new facility by Kirkwood, I will not be able to attend that, but I will be sitting in on the meeting by a Zoom at 11 o'clock. So, that's what I got.
Last week, we also had the town board meeting, you attended that.
I did, I had first one.
So, the other thing was I had also, uh, EV cog on Friday. And that was to start off for hiring, replacement for Karen Kirks, that she's gonna retire. It was a company that we hired, met with us board members. And then last night I had conservation, pretty quiet last night, the conservation. About it.
Time to hear if you're quiet there, man.
Yes, I did. Is that anything?
Yeah, Ron, you went to, uh, the energy meeting in Independence, anything you want to glean from that?
Uh, one I went to was in, uh.
Hawkeye Downs.
Hawkeye Downs, okay.
So you didn't make up the independence route?
I didn't make it to that.
Anyway, um, just kind of a little follow up or let you know that Greenleaf Energy is getting people to, to sign leases, they're trapesing through the county and try to get leases signed. Um, you know, with the data centers, we're what, in the next five years, Google is gonna have 10 of those built in, in Cedar Rapids. And one electrician was telling me yesterday is who's working with the data centers and all those type of things is that, um, Duane, Duane Arnold will not be able to supply the energy that next era is gonna need for all the things that they want, so what's the next move there? I mean, they'll, they'll be maxed out basically by the time that the 10 data centers are, are, are done, so. So what is the next move by some of these energy companies? You know, if, if Greenleaf told us that they only need 15 acres for this best station and yet they're getting leases, um, what's the next thing? Is it, is it gonna be a land grab and a, and an energy, uh, slam type thing that, oh, here we go, now we're gonna buy more territory, we're gonna put up solar panels? Are we gonna put up wind? Are they gonna try to get Buchanan County to change their, their comprehensive use plan and that type of thing? So something to be aware of, they, uh, they think big and, and I think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I can't remember, I've done a few presentations about some of the negativities of the best systems, the battery energy storage and moss landing with the fires and, you know, and the lawsuits because of health issues and that type of thing. So it's kind of scary because in, in that area of Hazleton, Hazleton has a population of 700, there's a population of about 1,500 Amish people and then there's approximately 6,000 people in Old Wine. If there is one of those runaway fires, you know, how do you, how do you evacuate? Because in Moss Landing, there's 1,500 people evacuated, how do you best evacuate the Amish community? And, you know, do people know? I mean, so anyway, it's just something to be aware of and, and something that, you know, PG&E was, like I said, was the, the company that, you know, back to if you watch the Aaron Brockovich movie, that, you know, they were from Hinckley and, and the contaminated water and they were sued and paid out 333 million dollars to these people and, and, but yet they're the ones that are responsible for the Moss Landing fires, so these big companies a lot of times don't, you know, they don't care, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Who, you mentioned Greenleaf, who are they? Are they a subsidiary of somebody?
Well, I'm trying to delve into that. You know, I think I also told you too that, that the Department of Defense, there was a study by, uh, Department of Energy that came out last November. They didn't have that information for you at the time, and their, the Department of Energy's, uh, cybersecurity, uh, division did a study. And 90 to 100% of the components that go into these best systems are owned by, by China or the Chinese military. And quite often they're fronted from companies that are in Thailand and Japan and throughout Europe and even the United States. So you just never know who owns, who owns who and, you know, Department of Defense considers that because there's so many components owned and controlled by China, that that is a national security threat. So, we, you know, there's, there's so much to the stories that, that go on that we need to be aware of.
Okay. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, for a vote on that one.
Tip it, aye.
Team an aye.
Bull's aye.
I stole that one from you, please.
It's all right, buddy.